Meeting of Tuesday, October 25th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Trustee Christensen Cunningham Whitmer.
Yeah.
Ryan Egg.
Here.
Colin Beck, Cumbier McNally.
Here. Okay, can we stand and recite the page of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, can you tell us if this meeting has been properly posted?
It was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, hometown bank, and the Village Center.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on. We've got some public appearances here. Officials, representatives of the Cambridge School District. I recognize at least one of you. Bernie, why don't you come up, introduce yourself, and we may have to move this monitor so that we can see that.
Do you think you're close enough?
Sit over here.
You ready?
Okay, we are ready. Go ahead.
All right, Martha, thank you for allowing me to come. My name is Bernie Nicely. I'm the district administrator for the school district. I do have some other representatives of the school along with me. We have a board member here tonight, Mike Huffman. We have our high school principal, Keith Schneider, and our business manager, Mark Worthing. So I'm here tonight just to give you a brief synopsis of our referendum that is coming up April 6th and allow you to answer any questions that you might have. So I do have a PowerPoint I can zip through pretty quickly. The referendum that was voted on by the school board a few months ago will have two questions to it. There is, the first question is whether or not to authorize the school district to raise $9.9 million through bonds for constructing a new performing arts center. Question two relates to operating the performing arts center, should it pass. While we're here, we'll talk about the need, the solution, and the process, how we got here. Just a little brief background on our schools. Most of you I know, and I know you know of the school district and know a lot about it, but generally it's a source of pride in the community. We do very well academically. We have a stellar extracurricular program for athletics and the arts, and we have a great deal of community involvement. And we're recognized often in different places. There's a couple of examples I'd say right there. We recently did a survey, part of our task force that got together, and we did a general question about satisfaction with the school district. And of those who had opinion on that, 93% of the people, the thousand respondents, thought that we were doing a very good job. Some examples of the support we've had in the community. We have passed, in my tenure, referendums in 2012. It was a facilities referendum. That was for some significant upgrades at the high school, a new roof at the high school, boilers at the high school. 2016 was an operational referendum that passed overwhelmingly. And we do have significant parent and community involvement and support. So the need, we have 87% of our students in the district, and we're just under 1,000 students. 87% of them are involved in some fashion in the arts, whether it's a fine arts, whether it's a music class, band, general art, performing arts, visual arts, and so forth. If the performing arts center comes to be, we anticipate that it won't just be a high school venue. It will be used by all of our students in the district for their performances. More about the need. The district lacks a performing arts center or space for educational programming, extracurricular activities, and community events. And I'll get into that a little bit more. The gym no longer serves as a suitable performing arts space in many ways. None of our performance spaces, none of our gyms have adequate acoustics, lighting, climate control, technology, or comfortable seating. The high school was built in 1969-70, was probably designed a few years before that, long before much technology was thought of. And we deal with that as an obstacle in many of our performances. We are doing more and more things that require the use of the stage. We have an awesome theater program. We do a musical every year. Last year was Mamma Mia, and we averaged over 400 people at that for each of those performances. Last year, we did keep track of how many people were coming to our events, thinking about this potential project and rightsizing it. And so we did keep track of that. We have very few events that are over 600, but we have a lot of them between 200 and 400. The largest event is graduation. That's probably something that we wouldn't be able to have in the performing arts center. Not many places can, because we'd have probably 10, 11, 1200 people at graduation. The other one that was over 600, I think, was when the UW Band came and performed for us with Mike Lutrone. More about the need. Without a dedicated performing arts space, our events compete with athletics per space. Our main stage is at the high school. We do have a smaller stage in the elementary school and at the middle school, the historic auditorium. But anyhow, the main stage, the one that's used very frequently for plays and band concerts and choir concerts, is the stage at the high school. And that's also the home of our wrestlers. And so during the winter, they are having to coordinate taking up and taking down numerous times throughout the winter. So we know that we've been interested in this for a long time. This came up when we had put a task force together in 2012, 11, 12, when we did the updates at the high school. It wasn't, it was decided that we wouldn't take it any forward. We had to focus on some more basic needs at that time. But we did convene a similar task force like we did in 2012. It was made up of community members. We had 32 people from the community. They met five times, did four site visits to recently built performing arts centers. They studied the needs, the options, and they also delved into a community survey. I'll talk a little bit more about that momentarily. So we did commission a survey by Schools Perceptions. It's something that, a company that just does that. It was professionally done. And we got 1,000 responses, which was probably more than I expected. We've done these in-house before. We've tried to mimic what they've done, but it probably had twice as many people than anything that we've tried to do ourselves. And the responses that we got back were really helpful for the task force. They took a lot of the comments to heart and made a lot of changes in what we were thinking we were going to do. Much of it, a lot of it got scaled back based on this survey. In fact, the cost of the project, after we visited McFarland, that was a $16 million auditorium that they just moved into this fall with a full fly and an orchestra pit. A lot of that, we would have liked to include it too, but the survey told us that's probably not going to be supported in the community. So the recommendation was to the school board, and they pared what was 14.4 on the initial plan down to 9.9 million. Again, that's quite a bit less. Some hard decisions had to be made to get down to that level. The other part is, the second question, you recall the school district built a pool back in the 90s, and that went to referendum. There was just one question, whether to build a pool or not, and there wasn't an operating question to go along with that. And the pool passed, but operating that pool for all of these years has been a difficult thing for the school district to keep up with. It has impacted the budget. It's very popular, and it's an awesome thing for the community. But I think it was a little short-sighted not to have the second question. And if we're going to build this beautiful performing arts center, we definitely need to take care of it. And this would, that second question would address the heating and cooling, the custodial services, and then someone to manage it. So this, the where part was really, was very, a big part of the conversation with the task force, the 30-person task force. Where to put it developed over time. And what you see here is where, if this would pass, this is where it likely would go. We talked about this side of the school and this side of the school. Initially, we thought that it would go right here, next to the band and choir rooms, and take up this space here. Turns out, well, we didn't know, but the cost of relocating many utilities would be very impactful to the cost, raised the cost. Also, it would take a lot of parking, and we already have, parking is at a premium for some of our, certainly on football games and other activities that we have at the high school. On this side, we would have been having to relocate some utility buildings, a maintenance shed, a greenhouse. So where we ended up was a solution in the back of the school, which we don't have to deal with the utilities. We actually add parking in this scenario. So some of the cost of taking something down, which you really don't get anything for, would utilize for more parking. So the seating capacity, another topic of discussion was how big. Sure. Oh, sorry, Gary. So the 500-seat house was, we have about 275 students at the high school, another 200 at the middle school. We wanted to have a house where we could have a presenter or a performance with the high school and the middle school both there to take advantage of just bringing one person, one performance for speakers, for instance. So we thought there would be a lot of occasions where we want those two student bodies together to see something. And so that was kind of the minimum that we stuck to was 500 seats. And then we looked at all of the events. We think that this would be the sweet spot for our needs. So when we were downsizing, trying to get to a lower cost, we sacrificed A, B, and C. But one thing the group really did not want to give on was the 500 seats. I think I touched on that. This primarily, and first and foremost, will be a space for the school district and for enhancing what our children are able to do at school in the way of performing arts. But it also, we envision it being something awesome for the whole community. We have CAP that's really changed life in Cambridge in a lot of ways, and there's many more things to do. We think that they will probably schedule a lot of things here. There's, I think, for all segments of the community, young, dance, different shows we can bring in. I think the sky's the limit on what could take place here. So first and foremost, it's for the school. But like all of our facilities, it's for the community. More than any school district, probably in the state, our school's buildings are used by the community. They're busy all of the time, 12 months a year, not 24 hours a day, but at least 16 hours a day. So I touched on some of the things that I think will, this venue will be used for. Certainly, our student theater groups, but also outside theater groups, entertainment such as music brought in, I think lectures, large group instruction for our students. We definitely see a possibility, if this happens, to add some curriculum courses where we have students learning the technology side of the industry, of the entertainment industry, building sets and set building. So we do see some curricular enhancements that we will definitely look into should this pass. And winding up here, you know, we have, like I said, CAP is a huge part in the community. They've really changed things. I see them bringing a lot of things to this space. That probably was a, well, I know, I've lived it, that when CAP started, that was a little unknown and uncertain how that would turn out in the community. The cost was it worth it? Our pool, nobody probably thought the pool question would pass, but it did. And we have 2,000 people a month that use the pool. And that probably started as a lot of question whether that was worth it as well. So the community is going to have to make, answer that question again. We also have the CD Players in town. That's a theater group that, their home is at the historic school. That auditorium was built in 1930s. And so we have the different stages that are used. And both, this will be an absolutely significant upgrade from anything that we have. So I talked to other superintendents, and I have an interest in asking them, you know, how often is your auditorium used? And they say, we use it all the time. And they list lots of things. And it's really exciting to think that that could be the same opportunity for our students as well. The cost is a huge consideration. So mill rate, you are intimately familiar with that as well, and your positions as board members for the village. 25 years ago, we probably had one of the highest mill rates in the state. In fact, I know we did. That has slowly come down, which positions us a lot more favorably for this. It's still going to cost the community a lot of money to do this, but we are much better positioned than we were 10 and 20 years ago, for sure. Our mill rate currently is $10.23, and that puts us pretty favorable with our neighbors. As you can see, there's a lot of them just in the area that are much higher than us, and still a few that have a lower mill rate. Our mill rate is the lowest it's ever been, as far as, at least in the past 25 years. Again, the two ballot questions. This just shows what it would cost on property value if you have $100,000 home, 200,000, 300,000. The first question is here, what it would cost on a $100,000 home, $76. And then if you, you can do the math yourself. That's the big number. And then that operational question is a fraction of that, but that's shown as well. This is interesting. This is our debt service in the district. Historically, this was the elementary school debt. We had pretty significant payments that we made. That ended in 2014, and that's when we went to referendum and made those improvements at the high school mostly, and those are in gold. When we went to referendum for that, the timing was awesome, because all of this significant debt was coming off. We could do what we were going to, needed to do, and taxes would still come way down. This is a little, this isn't as ideal, but you can see that even with the new debt, which is the blue, and it's structured to maintain constant over time, we'll pay less in the first seven years and then more going out. It's a 21-year borrowing period, and you can kind of see where we are. You can see exactly where we will be compared to where we are now and where we were when we had the elementary school, we were paying. We do have, we're in a really good place as far as our debt goes. There are a lot of districts that would envy our position. We are probably, or not probably, we are at less than 4% of our borrowing capacity. So we owe less than $3 million on this gold portion represents that amount. Sounds like a lot of money to you and I, and it is a lot of money. But when it comes to school districts, we're in a pretty enviable spot. So, school folks, is there anything that I missed that I really imperative that I share? Any questions from board members or anyone in the audience? Well, the board will have to make a decision whether they want to build it anyhow. The opposite could happen as well, where the second question passes and the auditorium doesn't. But the board would have to make a decision whether they think they can build it and find another way to pay for its maintenance and heating and cooling. But that would be an important decision that they'd have to make. Good question. Hi, Ted.
Have you considered putting, just roughing the orchestra pit in to be, you know, paid for at a later date, and the equipment at a later date?
That's a good question. The orchestra pit is a really, was really important to a lot of people in our, at our task force. And not to include that in the auditorium was painful. It is going to be an alternate bid if our, if this passes and the bids come in favorably, that would be something that we would try to add. We were at Partyville, and they built a new community our size, maybe a little smaller. They built a PAC, and that just opened up this year. They didn't have an orchestra pit. What their solution was, in the first three rows on their stage, laughter stage, right, I'm not sure which is which, they had removable seats. So if they would do a play or a musical, they could remove those seats and put the orchestra there. Mike, do you want to take any, Mike does this for a living, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, when you're at a stage of developing a budget, you challenge architects and contractors only to a certain degree. You don't want to go out to a referendum with something that puts you underwater right away.
No, I understand.
Build what you want to build. But when, if this were to pass, and we were to dive into the real development of it, we would then be challenging our team to work for cost-saving features throughout the facility and try to generate the money to be able to afford that orchestra pit. We started out with an estimate of over $500,000 for the orchestra pit. We looked at various options as to how you access that. You can either access that from backstage, or you can access it from the house. That varies dramatically with the price, and we were able to bring that down to about $300,000. So we think that there's room within there for us to maybe work that out, even within the $9.9 million. We also think that there's an opportunity for us to go out and do some fundraising. And maybe that fundraising goes towards some enhancements to the facilities. And in my mind, number one would be the orchestra pit.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mark.
I've got a question, but it's not on the referendum. It's on something you mentioned. Going back to one of your very first slides, you talked about academics. Can you just briefly touch on that, on how the school system is doing academically and why you're touting that?
Well, it's something that's our, that's our main purpose, is to succeed, be successful for our students and their academics. We compare favorably, certainly in the region, across the state. We are, we perform really well in our conference and in the area. Recognize for that in many ways. So, and what was the second part of that?
It was just how you're doing relative, you know, peer group against all the other schools that are in Wisconsin. I've heard statistics as far as how high you are. I'm just wondering if you know that or if you have that.
There's a lot of different measures for that. The state report card is something that is, a lot of people would look to, to see how your district is performing. We exceed expectations on the DPI report card across the district. You know, I think open enrollment is a good measure of how you're doing. Do students want to come to your district just for your school? And we have, I told you, we have 950-plus students in the district. 108 of them are open enrolled in. So we have 108 students that come to our school just because they think it's a conscious decision. It's not because they live here, because they don't. They just want to be part of our school system. And partly because of the things we offer, certainly because of our academics, our music program, our athletics, our special ed program. Those are all things that are attractive to families. Certainly, Severson Learning Center in KT is a huge draw. And that's double, more than double the number of kids that open enroll out. So that's changed over the last 10 years. We were about 50/50 in 2011, 12, and now we're 2 to 1, well, I guess, I think 60-some out and 108 come in. So that's really helped our district bear, or overcome some declining enrollment that we had for a time. Now we're going up again. But it's been a huge financial win for the district. And I think that's probably a good measure of how people think we are as a school district.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, audience? Okay.
Thank you, Mark, and I really appreciate the chance to come in and just let people know what the facts are. And people, you know, we're going to put it out to the community and see what they think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see here. Other public appearances. Mike, you're back here. Are you just observing tonight?
Yeah.
We just come because we're good community members. We just care.
Okay. Boy, you guys are desperate for entertainment. That's all I can say. I, you know.
Well, grand entertainment?
Yeah, all right.
Who needs Netflix, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We just like to see how we can help y'all out. It's the best place to see how we can get involved.
Okay. And we appreciate that.
I'll get those shirts over to those guys, Bernie.
All right. Bob Sawoff.
I don't have a presentation, but I will take any questions about the EMS that you may have. That's it.
One of our ambulances was out of service the other day when we really, really needed it. And that's why we have two ambulances. If one's out and we need another one, we can man that and go wherever it needs to go.
So it wasn't staffed? And, you know, I'd love to staff both the ambulances. We do have the occasion that we have double calls, you know, right? We do have the occasion that we have double calls, you know, right within minutes of each other. We make most of them, that is, people come to the station that aren't on duty. And we're, you know, we're still bringing in new people that live in the community that, that can jump on. They weren't able to do it at that call. So we have a contract with municipalities around us, actually with all of Dane County and Jefferson County ambulance services. And they then enact the mutual aid contract and they page out. So Lake Mills was paged out and took them 30 minutes to get on scene, which was, you know, it just pains me that, that that happens. But we just didn't have the staff. If you, and this is, you know, if you would fund staffing the second ambulance, I'll do it right away. I would love to have the second ambulance staffed. We'd be able to do more inter-facility. There's a lot of inter-facility runs that we turn down because we don't have the second staff. So I would love to staff it. You know, we go to a lot of events in the community where we have to come to touch a truck and so forth. And we do it with our on-duty crew. So if they get a call while they're there, then they have to take off. Sometimes if there's an event that requires the ambulance to be there, the event has to stop until they get back. So I'd love to staff the second ambulance. We do most of the time. A lot of time I run out and somebody else comes or I respond as a first responder. So I can provide aid until the mutual aid comes in. I was out of town that week.
I understand that. But, you know, when you're out of town, can't somebody else step up into your position so they can provide that mutual aid or whatever?
I don't have, I don't have another EMT, you know, licensed EMT that would come, would be available on an on-call basis for that amount of time. We do have on-call people. They do staff a lot of the time. Like I said, we get, we do get the second ambulance out a majority of the time. But that situation was very unfortunate. I'm really pleased and thank the community for doing such a fine job. A lot of people did show up from the community and did what they could until the Lake Mills ambulance arrived.
Anybody else for Bob here? Okay, all right, thank you, Bob.
Yeah, Mark, I got a question for her.
Yes.
This referendum, that's going to be expensive. And aren't you guys talking about maybe building a fire station next couple of years?
Well, we, we are.
If this passed, the people might have so much money. That's going to make yours all more difficult.
Yes, it will. Yes, it will. And that's been mentioned. So, thank you. All right, we'll leave that. Okay, so moving on here. Approval of the consent agenda, entertain a motion for that. Village Board minutes, the water and sewer, and the appointment of Paula Hollenbeck as an election worker.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Questions? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, President's Report. I've got one item and it, it's going to come in a little bit later. There was a resignation from one member of our planning commission. And Vicky Wagner is, is going to be stepping down, has stepped down. I talked to her today, left a message and thanked her for her service. But she can no longer work on the planning commission. She did make a recommendation for a, an individual. And as I said, that's going to come up a little bit later, so I'll leave that. Moving on, Library Board. Paul is not here. I don't see her up in the audience. Is there anything that should be mentioned on the Library Board? Or we just want to wait for push-off until the next time? Okay, that's fine with me. Village Office Updates, Ms. Mowen.
Obviously, we've been very busy with the elections, both the February and the April elections. We had roughly a 29% turnout for the primary, which is a wonderful turnout for a primary. We had about 25% of people did use our new touchscreen voting machine, which was good to see. We wanted to practice with it, get people used to it now before we have a busier election. Finishing up the paperwork and all the recording for the February election. Also, all the paperwork beginning for the April election. Ballots are being printed this week. They'll be here in about two weeks. Absentee voting and early voting will be starting then. Bike Trail Committee met. They did receive another $5,000 donation from the Dancing Goat. Working on a stewardship grant. Attending two different events coming up, including the Big Bikarama in Madison. Where they'll have a booth and so forth. Been working with the distillery. The limited power of attorney was completed by Mary Bailey. Notices have gone out for a public hearing before Plank Mission on March 9th for Todd Schultz and the land. Before, behind the Shell Station. He'll be coming in with a CSM and a rezone request there. Year-end financials, finishing up on things, finish the final tax settlements, agreement payments that we have with various parties. The solar company will, I did get confirmation from them today. They'll be able to come to a meeting on March 22nd to give a presentation. Quick update, the well maintenance program or project going on. Well 3 had been completed. They've been tested and approved by the state to be turned on. They're just finishing up the work on well number two. Tomorrow, they'll be flushing it. Once it's flushed, they have to get two approved samples from the state with varying time in between. They're looking to hopefully be turning well 2 back on by Friday or Monday. I know there's been some questions in the community. We haven't gotten many in the office. The, the well 3 does have chlorine, but it doesn't have the fluoride and it's not softened. So there is a little more iron in the water if people are tasting or, but it is, you know, tests were submitted to the state. It's all safe, it's good. That well just doesn't have the capabilities to do those things. So, but the main well should be back up Friday or early next week.
Okay, questions? Lisa, how'd the, did the vote go? Were there any problems? Because we have another election here in April and then we'll have a presidential election at the end of the year. So I'm just wondering, the machines are all, everybody understood how to operate those and good instructions? It went smooth? Okay, all right.
It was our first time using the express vote. We have been using it up in the office too for absentee voting, to get people used to it. With absentee, it's nice. This was a very small ballot for the bigger ballots. It won't let people cross-party, it won't let you, for a partisan primary. It won't let you overvote and so forth. So for people voting, early voting, we're assured that when we go to open their ballot and process it on Election Day, it's going to be a good ballot. We won't run into mistakes. So it was nice to get people using it when it was slower. People were using it, getting used to it. Think when we have bigger ballots, it'll be really nice to be able to zip through, use that. Huge benefit is we cannot run out of ballots. The ballots for that machine are blank ballots. A poll worker is putting in the district. So we're ensuring that it's the right ballot that's being voted. But it then marks it and it's fed into the normal machine to be counted.
So there is a paper trail.
There is a paper trail. It, that, the new machine just prints and marks the ballot. But it's blank paper, so we never run out of ballots.
Sure, that's great.
On the absentee ballots, we, we don't open those before the day of the election. They just come in and we store them up.
They're processed into the state system. The day they're sent out, if they're mailed, the day they're returned, the day they vote in the office. So that's all recorded with the state prior to the election.
Okay.
We open them on Election Day. We walk them through the line. They get a voter number, just like everybody else. They're opened in stacks, so.
So they're all recorded on Election Day? They don't go, they don't get recorded like two days later or three or whatever? So there's enough time to get those through.
Yeah. A busy election like April will probably have somebody come in, a poll worker, just to do that work. On the busy elections, oftentimes too, on the Sunday before, three poll workers and myself will come in and we will pre-number the ballots so that they're already numbered. So we're not having to walk through the line with each and every one.